We had rolls in coffee one morning.
What about that other place you were not going to?
But you still have supper, you know.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Well, but you still, and even your breakfast. I'll write up.
My glasses.
We never got any receipts for that. They introduced myself. They said, "You're familiar. Who are you?" I said, "Tim Zepplin from Illinois." That's where I've seen people before. You know, I get the short end of the story. Can you?
Don not coming today?
Don sent me a text that he's not feeling well, so he will not be here. Need to get him a gay wall card or anything? Yeah, it'll be all right. You all, shall we begin? Any additions or corrections to the minutes of our March 16th meeting?
I have a couple things. And we did our resolution for the, you know, fire departments and named the individuals. Do we want to put their private phone numbers down?
Well, I guess I have them in the resolutions. I could take them out of the minutes.
I don't know. What's the other question or is it important thing?
Well, this, I would delete Pat's home phone number. But that 880, that's a county, that's a county number, isn't it?
Yep.
That one could probably stay.
How about that?
Probably the same with him?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it their home, all those, the cells or?
Yeah, this, that was selling. That's my own.
Just Pat's cell?
And my second thing on Good Friday, I think we need to, we're talking about Good Friday. You know, all county employees when we see four hours paid, perhaps we need to go on and, you know, state jail law enforcement staff that actually work with you. There's something to that effect, as it say, you know. Everybody gets the four hours, you know, whether they work or not. Does that actually work?
Just double.
At the jail law enforcement, okay.
Anything else?
Well, I have a question. When we did the ordinance number 26, first reading and hearing, towards the bottom, a motion to approve amendments to the ordinance. This is just a hearing. You're doing really good doing each other. I don't recall us doing the motion or having to do a motion.
No, we didn't vote on anything about.
That's all I got.
I was confused with what we did with the other one with what happened with the planning commission, which will happen today on the 27th.
All right, thank you. Catch you on screen. Is there a motion to approve the amended minutes in today's agenda? Is there a second? Tom, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Anything for public comment from anyone? Okay, Jim is next. Thank you, Jim.
Copy. Let's stretch it. What's indicated on there is item 25, or line 25. We're going to be going to the meeting tomorrow in Webster. We'll get a motion to approve that for the next meeting, but 23,000, about 206 will be per se eight more land mobile radios. We're at triops, so one will probably go away on it. The rest will go to fire departments. One will go to the mobile command center.
What lines again were you referring to?
Just 25.
Okay.
Let's see if it's Robert's County, RCE, Robert's County, and the Robert County mobile radios. And Dennis, I wanted to highlight you, item 10 on that list for D County.
Yeah, okay.
Just wanted to give you a quick heads up that when we look at the drone, you know, we're looking at $22,000 there. And the person that runs that drone has to have a pilot's license. There's a lot of issues to come with that. You just can't fly one, so it's actually put up there. It's different if you're an individual or if you're a government.
Okay.
Thanks for coming down on that, and that's the rules.
Didn't Grant County have like 30 some thousand in there? It's time to get somebody that.
Easily. And we have enough regional assets with these other counties that we need a drone, we can call it. We can call it, we can call it whoever we need.
Is this whole land security?
That's the whole land security. So just want to give you that awareness that we'll be ordering those radios. Any questions on that?
Yeah, okay.
No, I think we need to get the inquiry first, and we'll come back next week. This is just the awareness that we're having at the meeting. This should have happened two weeks ago, but because of the storm that happened, we canceled.
So the radios that were replaced, are those usable?
Yes.
Is it something that we go to our highway department?
Yes.
Okay. And because they want to go on their own frequency, correct?
That's my next thing. Item two, Robert's County Highway Channel. Within Robert's County, we have 31 different frequencies that we can utilize. Most of our law enforcement, fire, Robert's County OEM. There's also Robert's County OEM 2. There's four of those channels that nobody's ever been on that channel and clicked their microphone to talk to it. So the good news here is that we can take one of those channels and relabel that Robert's County Highway. They can then switch off a Rob OEM, click the button on it, and now they're programmed to that channel. So we found this temporary solution, I think, for at least the next two years, that they can go off that channel while the system is still done up to the P25, which they're going to the 2023. If we, let's see, there's two ways to put that. We could pretend to go to analog, which means they're not on the state digital system. And they can keep the same channel, and they should be able to function off an analog channel. It's not like you're that, you know, sure on the fire department, you put the light with DVD's, you know. Then this will just be, there'll be no phone, and we're on there just talk directly. So we think that might be the viable solution for them, for County Highway. There's no cost, but Commissioner said, those other radios that don't operate in digital system can become usable.
And Jim, is it just a matter of turning, turning the dial to a different frequency, or will they?
It's already in there, but we'll rename it, like maybe Rob OEM 2 or 3. Wilmont Fire's never been used, but the first channel. Which one we think that they're not using, or we know they're not using, and then rename it Robert's County Highway.
Sure.
So we think we found a pretty good solution to what we thought may have been an expensive. Dennis, I can send a copy to you, or lay a copy there of the grant, Corona grant. It's just information item only.
Something with Corona's name on it here.
Should be stakeholders, probably six or seven cases. So I got a call a week or two ago from Heather Alaman, who's now the state litigation officer, and knowing that this grant was coming down. Corona is the only one that needs to sign that document. If we're not a passenger, they'll do it on their own. So what that does is allows them $50 some thousand, I believe it is, and watch her to do an H&amp;H hydrology, hydraulic study. And that should help them with future funding, so they need to do something more on the Corona, to help with their flooding. So it's really good news for.
I'd say so. That's a, that's a nice grant for.
So they did not do one in the past, but they assume that's probably old and just for so long or something?
I don't know that I remember one last H&amp;H study was had done there. This is a pretty in-depth. I've seen what's done before, and these engineers, Clark Engineering, whoever it is, would do that H&amp;H study and put that in their communications.
Have they got a copy of it?
Yeah, they've already got it. If she hasn't already signed it, I plan on attending the meeting, make sure that it's in Highway, and to move that whole process forward. So it's welcome to do.
Yeah, for sure.
Final thing I have is from our LIPC meeting on Thursday night. Fire departments, if we get to where, and we are that way in Alberta throughout time, if we get a red flag warning, or it's windy, or it's whatever, and summit fires concerned about it, or Roswell fires concerned about it, that they have the authority to put out a burn ban itself. So it's likely a discussion to happen. They shouldn't have to come through three different channels, you know, through emergency management, through this ward, wait seven days, you know, to put a burn ban on. I encourage dispatch, you know, if we're in a red flag warning, and they get that high wind, dry, low humidity, that if somebody calls us, says we want to burn, you just tell them no. Don't say words with them, just no. And people are really good about calling in and requesting, and say that they're going to burn, so they're not sending the fire departments out aimlessly to a call. But there comes a point in time where we need to just say no.
Yeah, did you say that was for municipalities, or who does that apply?
Fire chiefs.
Okay, the fire chief, okay. Any fire chief?
Summit fire puts it on, it's county wide. If Roswell puts it on, it's county wide.
Do we need a motion on that?
I don't know how that process would work. We may need to visit the city and say, how do we rewrite that? Revisit the ordinance or resolution that does that. That's something that they want as a tool in their toolbox to help situation of those need a policy law, or somebody that's got a burn gift. That's what their request.
And then the thing he asked about, just to add in the paper again, that reminding people that if they're going to burn.
That you have to call, yeah. I think that's always good. Give them that situation awareness. They'll get on social media. People will know that the burn ban is off long before they know it's on. But we're always in a burn ban, I think, that you have to call.
Whoever that old guy was that asked that we could do it, so I said, yeah, put another item.
Then maybe we should put it in there once a month for a while, just as a reminder. That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
That very good LIPC meeting, Dan.
Wouldn't have turned out to be an event. Might have been the social event of the year.
Then two guys is very good, I thought, with the radios.
Yeah, so the people are reading the radios from it. Comes off the state bid, and we're getting EF Johnsons. Vantec is the name of the company. They don't do the installs. There's still issues throughout the entire county with, and here's with law enforcement vehicles, where they're in trouble with reaching somebody. But Pat Stickland can drive up to White Rock and communicate with everybody without any issues. So why is that? Well, it's got to be a programming or an install issue. And maybe over the years, that's evolved into being a place where those zones that they're not being able to hit are having to become an install or a wrong frequency. So I'm hoping that that's too big once you get that issue resolved. They should not be able to not do it. It's not acceptable. Questions on me?
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I don't have anything for you guys this week. I'm just stopping by to see if you guys have questions.
Just on that burn ban, that's what I was going to say.
I'll look into it, but.
Ordinance, it's ordinance, or it's number 16.
I can give them my.
July 30th.
Yeah, if you want to make a copy, bring it over at some point today, and I'll look through it. Anything else?
Nothing from this end. Dylan, thank you.
All right.
You guys have a good day.
Appreciate it.
You too. Big day today.
Do you need, what do you, on this thing? You want to sign it?
How do you make that? I'll give you a second. I'm out of time, so they're killing on. Let's hear about eBay this trip now.
Yeah.
We had a couple of, couple of good full days that, well, Wednesday was full anyway. Thursday was a half day, but we talked about the catastrophic legal fund. This one, Rob Forten, who you've heard of before, the legislative audit, reminded us that our annual report needs to be published on the, on the website. So I've already talked to Don about that. She's going to, she's going to get that put on there. Greg, Greg Favre.
Favre?
Favre, yeah. You've heard him speak before. He's in charge of LTAP, very, very knowledgeable. He talked about traffic counters are available for loan. That, that probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we got one and monitored some of our roads around here. Because I don't know if we've ever had that done. Let's see here. Talked about, talked about the federal bridge replacement program. Tom, you can chime in anytime with this. To, one thing that maybe we need to ask Pat about is the federal aid road routes. We don't, I don't know for sure which is our federal aid.
Federal aid.
Road, road routes in Robert's County. A lot of, there is some funding that's geared just towards those roads, federal aid roads, so. We heard a little bit from Toby Morris, that was there, on economic development programs that he's been involved with. Not so much TIF financing, but other programs. And then this didn't really apply to us too much, but Jim Schmidt is with the Sioux Empire, rural housing development, the Sioux Falls, and they've been pretty active down there with their housing development. Let's see here, a couple other things. We had a real good speaker on Thursday morning. Rob, Rob Holwittner from Legislative Research, talked about Robert's Rules of Orders, and the two, the two standards that are used, what they call Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure, has Robert's Rules of Orders in it, geared more primarily for state legislators. And then the other one of Robert's Rules of Orders, he just referred to it as Robert's, for conducting meetings for, for counties and municipalities. Good, good refresher stuff there. Let's see, Greg was back on. Let's see, no, his staff took the Wednesday one. Greg was on, Greg Favre took the Thursday one. He gave some real interesting statistics of, one that I wrote down was 9,000 cars is equivalent to one loaded semi. I just went, whoa.
Some of the options they had for maintaining, just dragging gravel loads were really interesting. For any of some of the things that they did.
Yeah.
How many? Cars, there's no gravel load that stand up. Some of those gravel loads, like down Sioux Falls, people are commuting the traditional way. William Street, I have to leave.
Yeah, yeah.
But some of those, like the shore, where they had like 48 with them, they moved later the whole time.
Really?
It was expensive. Not expensive, but that's all.
And we.
Wretched words. Well, I was just thinking, like, I know there's trouble spots that I'm worried about, always kind of get washboarded. Treated that, a little scratch, and it works a while, maybe would take care of that.
I'd like to, when you said C, the proper way to do that, you know, being.
I have a mind by mind, like, but it's just an app, you know, someone comes and scrapes it on. It's not mixed in, it's not, something like this must be kind of processed with the gravel when they put it on. For years, when they came, where I have the five, they just raised it like, you know, maybe a year. Except maybe in the fall, they go, and it doesn't, bleeding, it doesn't burn. Because it's, it just breaks, it's damaged it up. It gets hard, it gets, I think, C is perhaps just dry. But I think what he was talking about was, was actually a process where you look when they gravel road. It must be very expensive, and so it's not just on surface. So that makes it quite a bit more expensive.
Yeah, and I think one of the counties, I can't remember, had turned some of their hard surface roads back to gravel. And I said, well, what is the, what is the approximate cost of that? That range is depending on the machinery and whatever, how, how much you got to tear up. But he said, he's seen counties try and do it themselves with, like a scarefire type thing, and he said, that doesn't work. But the rate there is anywhere from 25 to 40,000 per mile. I mean, it, the, a lot of this was geared towards new people, so they, they were really taking it in. And some of their jaws hit the floor. Greg, Greg gave an example of a budget, a county highway budget. And these numbers might be just a little bit on the high side compared to what we do. But anyway, he had one here that I took a snapshot of, of a county that would maintain. It's kind of blurry. I don't know if it's 100 miles or what. But anyway, he said if they were to do 11 and a half miles of overlay at 130,000 per mile, that'd be 1.3 million. And if they were to re-gravel 12 miles of their roads, he's got down 30,800 dollars per mile, that would be 369,000 dollars. The wages for this would be 500,000 dollars. And then he threw in equipment of one motor grader, 350,000, which is pretty accurate. So anyway, this, this, this budget just had those four items, and it came in at 2 and a half million dollars.
That's no patching.
And that's no, no patching, no, no breakdowns. Yeah, no, no contingencies at all, but. So the new people were like, okay.
One thing I was interested in was talking about, maybe like five year plan for, not, you know, we have that for the bridges. What are you going to do with, which roads are you going to have to do over the next five years? You kind of plan it sort of later, some people, you're going to have to make it last all year. You don't plan for them a couple of years, but then all of a sudden you got huge expense. And then everybody else suffers that year. I think Pat giving us that list of what he kind of intended to do, because you're kind of starting in the right direction. You just have something like how many miles of this, or how many miles of that, or the extent of it being done. So of course, that, that could change when the frost goes out.
Yeah, that's true.
Some of them are lasting up pretty good.
And that bridge plan that we have in, in place, wherever we've inspected and identified all those bridges, is really a good document that, that when it comes to funding, of course, the, the state looks at that too, and scores how many, how many bridges your county have that are in poorer condition. We heard from David, he pronounces it Fifeley. When the people lived here, it was always pronounced Fifele, but anyway, he's the executive director of South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, the company that we have our insurance with. And one of the best takeaways there was through employment practices liability and government practices liability, we're entitled to one, one free hour of legal consultation on that. So if we do have a question that we're not really quite sure of, and of course, we would involve Dylan with this. But he said that that hotline is for local attorneys, and we're entitled to one free hour. They, we belong to the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. So whether it's hiring, or what we're doing as a governing body, we have legal questions, we can go, go to that. That's good, you know.
An example would be if we decide to do a revision on the COVID shots.
There you go.
Yeah, we did some. That's just an example, right?
Yeah, right, great, right. If we could get, get another opinion from, from that. We should let Dylan know that we've got that available to us. Wendy Simler from Department of Revenue gave a talk. A lot of their emphasis on her, her presentation was that, and Sherri is, I'm sure aware of this, that the state is changing over to a new computer data, data system, axiomatic. And it's, it's primarily with the Department of. and it's, it's primarily with the Department of Equalization, the business that Sherry does with the revenue department. And it was, just for information, don't test me on any of it, because it, what I got out of it is that most counties are using the same type of program, but there's three or four out there that have a different program that have their data, so what they're trying to do is get all the counties to upload the data to here. And they can, they can analyze that when it comes to, uh, maybe more consistent with crop productivity, egg, egg land and that sort of thing.
I think, I think what the issue is that now they, everybody, all the counties send their data, maybe a little bit in form, so they have to actually manually enter some of that stuff where they're working with all of the vendors that supply their programs to the counties to do spot based, so that all come in in one similar format, so they can just tell them what the data, that they have to be entered, and speed, they have a whole process for that. So they're trying to work, rather than have the counties go through, they expect everybody, I've got, some of them said, well, why don't you just have all the counties get the same software, say, at whose expense, you know? I know where that heads for you. This is better where they're going to the software people that sell it to the counties and say, why don't you modify your software so you can all see that data simultaneously, so we don't have to review that talent and process. That's a good tool. No, they didn't announce that, if it ever come back, people would have fun with that too. I think that's the money.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Other than that, we went over to State Surplus and picked up the other Tahoe, and Tom and I brought that one back.
How's that one?
It's in good shape, it needs some minor things, it needs a new windshield. Maybe the tire's balanced, but other than that, it was.
Got the lights and.
It has, it has a bar.
Did it have a sign that was reading?
I don't know if it had the speaker, but I didn't dare press any buttons.
No.
It's, it's pretty neat though, because he, he drove, he drove it back and I rode it, but it's just your typical squad car that nobody will pass you. Till we, till we got just north of Redfield a little ways, and a couple of young girls not paying attention, they, they went zooming by us. Then pretty soon the other cars litter around, instead we had backed up that. Kind of, kind of comical, but we had, we had one follow us all the way from.
Oh my gosh.
Pierre de Miller. But, it's in good shape and I was, I was happy.
They have the cost of the equipment.
Yeah.
To reveal.
Yeah. Got the cage, got the cage in the back.
Very big, I hope they work out, I'm really sure.
I won't hear from Tyler what, what he thinks about it, so. I sent Pat a message that we're running.
Pat's, Pat's out, he's at his conference.
Oh, he went to Devlin, didn't he?
Yeah, yeah. I wish, I wish we would have had that ordinance hearing earlier, because then they.
Oh, right.
All right, so guys, you want me to squeeze this hand on the bottom here?
Yeah.
Okay. I had a, I had a visit from Aunt Kimball the other day, she's on the Lake Township. And they had their meeting, and they were just kind of wondering, okay, back on July thirtieth of two thousand twenty, um, the, whatever sent from the commissioners, or from Don anyway, about, um, the, the graph group representing the Timber Ridge TIF have recently completed the work on the two miles of four hundred and seventy-third Avenue in Lake Township. The work completed is described in the letter to you dated June nineteenth of two thousand eighteen. Per the letter, Timber Ridge has fulfilled their obligations to rebuild the road to its original condition. Any and all, further maintenance of this road will be the responsibility of Lake Township. So should you have any questions, please contact the commissioners. So she was one, they as a group, I mean, they, they know what money there is left in the TIF, and they were just wondering if there was, when, when the township at this time, if they have to do a little maintenance, can they submit a bill to the county for reimbursement out of the TIF?
Don't know, I don't know.
I wouldn't think so, the TIF wasn't the team at Township, or the team for Timber Ridge and towns.
That bill is.
But what's the difference if the TIF had somebody else do it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, they, they might be able to submit it to the TIF, sort of Timber Ridge, who could then submit a thousand, I mean, as a pastor, but I don't think they do when they're crewed, the townships do.
I wouldn't either, huh?
That's why I was saying, if they go through grass.
Yeah.
If they would submit that.
The grass and grass is different, I would think would be it.
And that's why it's kind of, it's kind of topic where I would encourage you to work with Timber Ridge, I don't see a problem with, the, the TIF might, some of them are going for gravel for this year, I don't see a problem whatsoever, I think they should try to work together on gravel. And like Don said, everybody knows how much money is there, everybody's wondering where the money's going to go.
Right, right. And both, both Toby and Rod commented when I was out there, they would like to see that become closed, dispersed. So is that something that you need to run by Glenda or, or Rod maybe? About, about involving the townships as long as.
I just think.
Got that all about that. One of the, that grass involved there too.
Maybe try to talk, maybe want to get along, that's the rest of it.
Okay. Good question.
Well, I can't imagine they don't have enough expenses to, well, they just submit them. So I can't imagine they don't have enough expenses to submit proposed development, why don't they just submit? You know, the list that you listed from way back and before it even existed.
Very great.
And they've done, I'm sure they've done a lot, lots since then.
I had someone fully ask about donating vacation time to another, a part-time employee. Is that something you want to discuss in executive session? I think I've mentioned.
I guess I would be talking first.
Definitely if we're going to talk about individuals, I, I thought it was geared more for sick leave than vacation, but.
No, this was, no, this is a different situation.
Yeah. Sure, Tim, motion for executive session, like, Tim, is there a second to that? Hey, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Have a chair. You're in the hot seat.
Hey.
Yeah.
Everybody's moving along today, huh?
Yeah.
Good.
Except for one of like being which.
Oh, so you have to stick around anyway.
Yeah. Was it a full moon last night?
It was pretty light. I don't know if it was full moon or not, it was light.
They did a vaccine, I got like, three o'clock or something, come and go. Guys are.
As long as, as long as those full moons don't happen on Fridays. That seems, that combination seems to be a bad one.
Did I miss it lost?
Had to get a cup of coffee. Oh, Denver, come in. See, Don was right behind me.
I'm right there. Oh, you guys got more bills, I'm not very done with that.
Okeydoke. All right, our jail count this week is fifty-four, fifty-four total. So we're moving, like I said last week, we're moving in a good direction that way. Myers of Aberdeen is coming to pick up those three vehicles. Don, you happen to have the number, the numbers up, up hand?
Yeah.
They weren't? They weren't astronomically high, um, but for three vehicles that are inoperational, or inoperational. They, I talked to the salvage yard down in Aberdeen, or sorry, in Sioux Falls, and they said for the, the years and the mileage that was on those, they weren't even, they weren't even worth coming to getting. So for Aberdeen to decide that they give us, I think, what was it, seventeen?
Range is anywhere from thirteen hundred to seventeen fifty.
Yeah, and it was the newer one, the newer vehicle with the, the damage was about seventeen hundred, and the other, the other ones were kind of around that fifteen, thirteen hundred.
Okay.
So, um.
It's a price of a bit, one of you.
Yeah, so one of the, it'll end up paying for one of those, one of those Topos that we, that we brought back. So, so that's that, and it'll kind of clean things up that we have out there, just kind of sitting around. Jen Nessa has been working this week with Millbank Communications, they've been going through and, and part of that, the radio upgrades and stuff, so she's been working on that. They've been working on the radios. Something that will, that's important, not urgent, um, is, and it sounded like it may have been something that's been brought up to the commissioners before, is a second, lightning strike tower. According to Jen Nessa, it may have been something that was brought up three, two or three years ago. And for the amount of radios that they, radio equipment that they have in that radio room, one tower is not enough. And according to the Millbank Communications guys, they've been out there, radio guys that have been working on that, if that tower got struck, there's the, the box that it's connected to down in the radio room wouldn't be enough to disperse the electricity and keep the radios from firing. So, um, she, she started looking at what it would probably cost, and she's thinking somewhere probably between about six and seven hundred dollars.
Oh, God, you need to do that immediately.
So she'll, she's working with them and, and I'll kind of let her, I'll let her know that. So, she'll, she's working with them and, and, uh, I'll kind of let her, I'll let her know that, because probably...
I mean, that's what I feel like, I mean, what radios cost.
Well, yeah, the cost of the radio, so, so all... I will, uh, I'll visit with her when I get back and tell her to kind of get on that. Plus, Millbank Communications is still there, so they can, they can maybe point us in the right direction and getting that, getting that tower done. So... Uh... Other than that... We don't have much.
Thank you.
Uh, you know, we have our, we have our new deputy vehicle that we, uh, the silver towel that we brought, brought back from the high patrol, it has the graphics on it now. Uh, he, uh, that's being driven by the new, new deputy, deputy farmer. He and deputy Ingerhopper, they went out and they went in the parade up at Corona last weekend. So they took that through there. Just have their own, he did that on his own free time, he was giving, um, just kind of a community service thing that he did.
I was, I was there, and the crowd was pleasant. They got a lot of harass, attaboys, that sort of thing. There was no hostility at all about what the hell are you doing here?
So, that's good.
Yeah.
Things have really been... Things have really just been good. We're moving in, we're moving in a good direction, and they're just, you know, sometimes the road is just...
It's good, yes.
Yeah. So, um, we're, you know, right now, right now, the, the biggest thing about what's going on out at the jail is, you know, the jail's hitting kind of that stage where there are some fixes that are, that are happening. Things are getting older, you know, technology is getting updated, that's probably, quite honestly, that's kind of been one of our biggest expenses in the next, the next couple of years, just, um, just some of those. Well, we already experienced it with the, with the radio upgrades and, and all, and all of that stuff. Once that gets changed, we'll, we'll probably change one of the biggest expenses. So, but that's what I, that's what I foresee being one of our biggest, our biggest expenditures, um, come in the next couple of years. Just those things that, uh, you know, garage doors that go out, springs that go out, and all of a sudden you have a, have a big bill as far as a garage door or a spring or, uh, other than that, that's really all I, I have to do.
That, that vehicle we brought back, did that have a radio in it, or I couldn't tell by looking at it?
It didn't, it didn't have a, it didn't have a radio. Our radios, our radios have to go in it, so we have an extra, we have an extra radio for it. And we're exploring some things too with the, with the integration of the new, uh, software. You know, we, that's going to be a vehicle that will either be a spare patrol vehicle, which doesn't happen very often, we don't, it's not something we deal with very clearly. It's probably going to be one of our transport vehicles. So we'll use that, we'll use that for transport vehicles, in which case we can probably use analog, uh, analog channel. So we can use some of the cheaper, uh, some of the cheaper radios, the older radios, and still be viable, I can get by that way. They don't need to be scanning, you know, other, other radio stations and things like that. All they need to be able to do is talk back and forth to our dispatchers, so that they know where they're at all the time. So, not a huge, not a huge expense. Alright.
Yeah, we thought it was pretty easy to just walk in there and say, say who you are. They said, "You want to see any ID? Do I need to sign anything?" "No, sitting over there, go ahead and take it."
You bet it guys didn't take a couple of those other vehicles. Sit around, but you should have maybe tried that.
Yeah, really, so...
No, they're, they're very helpful, and like I said, they're, they're, um, that'll be a res, that'll be a resource we'll probably continue to use. Um, because they said they have a lot of equipment that comes in through there, and anything that they can do to help us. They said anytime you need anything, just give us a call if we have it. Um, if we have it, we can surplus it out, we'll absolutely do what we can.
I sure hope it works out, I mean, not even a price of a cage or nothing, I mean, man, that...
So, yeah, they're, they're incredibly helpful.
That's good.
Sometimes, sometimes it's, it's so we know, right?
Yeah.
So, and that's, that's kind of the thing, they're, they're willing to help. It's kind of a secret they want to, it's kind of a secret they want to, they keep, uh, between, between the sheriff's offices and the police department.
Yeah, you don't want to tell the other companies.
Now, I don't want to just start fishing in her pond. That's all I have? Alright.
Thank you.
Keep coming that way. Yep. Guys, take care.
Whoop. It's a little bit behind you.
I was making a headshot when I saw the, I thought it was... I thought you might come in and say something, but... Scrambling in my mind if you remember this title.
Oh. Secretary of... Um, do I need to sign these titles, or do you sign them?
No, I sign them.
Okay. And we didn't have to advertise that surplus, we just sent it out?
We need the motion.
We never got that kind of money, they're gone, they're over. I can't believe it.
You're coming with us. And they come with you?
I didn't know Myers dealt in, I thought they were more of implement, uh...
They got...
Tractors and combines and all that kind of stuff.
The other brothers into that, yeah? Across the road.
Okay.
Oh, they'd be interesting.
No, thank you guys that much.
We dodged, picked it up. It's got a nice paint job.
You're looking at surplusing, aren't you? Your spotted dodge?
Can you talk about that letter that... He's a road, of the landfill?
Oh. Has that been sent in?
I hope not. He, he is quoting section one oh three in the landfill permit. This talks about the operator. It does not apply to this situation, I don't think. Directly refers to him as the operator and his responsibilities as far as, you know, wings and permits. It has nothing to do with us, uh, Wednesday hours.
I just have, first I just name to you, where she wants it, it's a rule that don't pass. Say, this is the rule. Wednesdays, prior notification and rule. Necessary.
And the last sentence too. Wednesdays not be used as your schedule drop off days if possible. It's, it's... Who determines that? And then that section that he, referring to one point zero three, that, that's a, a state permit, you think? From the state to, to our operator, so it's not...
I think that's fairly what our, what our operator is responsible for now.
Yeah.
It doesn't show authority for him to, to deny a warrant.
Yeah.
And I don't look at that, that's being unnecessary, unless... It's our responsibility.
I guess I'll ask him about, is this a draft copy, or what's...
They talked about sending it out, but the bills, well, the bills would have gone out yet.
Okay.
And maybe it would carry more weight if it was somebody, Robert County Commissioners or, or Joint Leader, whatever, but...
Yeah, join, yeah, it could be.
We all got a message in too, about this. You want him here while we revise it? You want him here while we revise this? Do you want, you want these are here while we revise this?
Hopefully he hasn't sent it out.
Yeah, that was my first question.
Revise it and then prompt, and you either, you know, fax him a copy or scan and email him a copy or whatever.
Well, he wrote back, "No, it's just a draft."
You got the one that's here with you? I can pull the... I know it's a pass over here. Pass over there. They're going to like, put my application through. I choose for a few months.
These are got back to me, it hasn't, hasn't gone out, so it's just a draft.
Okay, so you guys want changes?
Yeah, we got to rework it. Tom's got some editing going on over there.
Here's a copy of that.
Preaching sword there.
Okay. Why do you want to say?
I was trying to say, also on Wednesday, if there's a higher notification approval for law services required. And then for this, and maybe, maybe if we have a little bit of personality conflict between these or some of the others we've signed with this commission.
That's what I'm saying, you can have a track commission, there you go, Randy's name or...
I would still leave that in there, my colleague, if you have questions, you can call Landville, and you can sign it. Or rather, you can make a mission, sign a commission for it. Not a personal, personality, but it's, it's policy.
You're on the move again?
What, what changes does he have here?
The first part, I think we don't pay the sacrament.
I did a video, we asked about this right now, this claim for...
Okay.
Okay, and that was... Do you want to review that?
Got the same thing I have.
You have this then, don't you?
And then, I would send it to Randy before we sent it out, but he, he wants to...
Yeah.
Hey, get out of here, maybe I'll go get a haircut in this fashion.
There you go. Don't forget to come back, though.
Yeah, wonderful, that's what I say, we got a good job going on.
I know, we just, when Don gets back, we've just got the, uh, the abatement and, uh...
What is that for?
Authorization for... Looks like they're repurposing. Something here. Sherry wanting to move a computer from your office down to hers, is that what this is?
It's one of my old ones.
Okay.
And that, so she has to have some of your programs put on there. It's a, it's a nice model, it's got a monitor, you know, self-contained computer.
Okay.
And, um, so, but they have to put that type of stuff on it.
Sure.
Is that the amount of our planning I was only budgeted?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve the expenses on that? Tim? Thank you. Third second? Tom? Do you second that? I'm pleased we're seeing third second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
What do you want, that have Dawn docked it up and then?
Send it back to Randy, see it before, maybe he wants to add or change it. Tell him and Dawn before he sends it out.
Well, Kayla should have this on their computer out there, so I should just be able to send this and she should fix it and then send it back.
Right.
And you want Robert County Commissioner?
I believe that, mind what, if you have questions, call Lando, and maybe sign it, because it's Robert County Commissioner.
Do you also want me to tweet that other letter and then have you guys sign it?
We're going to the very least, yes.
The very least?
Did you kind of do that? Did you do that?
Yeah, I don't know, maybe we just sign it, Robert County Board of Commissioners or something, rather than them. Yeah, maybe they personally sign it, do we?
No.
And we're sending it to both parties? You wanted to go to a third person?
Yeah, we said to Nancy Clark here at the county.
The Nancy?
Yeah, she called me about earlier. And I kind of had a discussion with her, and she replied.
You have that one too?
Yeah, she got that.
Okay, so, how do you spell quad?
Q U A D N E R.
Q U A?
F T I E R. And one A, it's two.
And that abatement, it was put on the tax rules, it should have been taxed exempt. We had done one similar to that last year and for the Roswell development. And it's like for twenty-three dollars or something. It should be taxed exempt.
Twenty-five, what is that for?
Owning and redevelopment commission?
Owning and redevelopment in Roswell.
Oh, I don't know what that, what property is.
Then the Simonson is in charge of it. He shouldn't have got the tax notice.
What's happening with that? They won't sell it either. Was that me and you Dennis, or were we all up there and rocked at that time? The smell of getting grass in it and stuff?
Well, it was, there was an abatement out there last year. It was reduced from, wasn't a lot of that anymore.
Is there a motion to approve the abatement of this? Pay, thank you, is there a second? Tim, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Just one signature?
Uh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Let's split it up there. Up there. Thank you. Thank you. What else do we have, Dawn, before our one o'clock deal, anything?
No. We should have made that before eleven o'clock. Get that timing on.
How long do they have?
Yeah, we're gonna know how long the meeting goes, I guess. Did Todd leave a step-by-step deal?
I have, I have that.
Like you did at the last one?
I have it.
Oh, yeah, no.
Yes.
All right, as long as I have it by, before the meeting starts, that would be fine.
Okay, with your copy, can I just give you the minutes from last time? With the step-by-step? I can type it out.
Well, like what you have?
Okay.
You haven't done that.
I will do that.
Basically, it's just a reading of it, no action, right?
Well, this one is combined with the planning zoning, so there will be some action. To open the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We don't hold a first reading.
No. But there'll be the recommendation to do as your planning zoning recommended.
Motion to recess till one? Bills?
Yeah, get everything done till, when you're done, we can go.
Very good. Tim, you want that motion to pay claims? Tim, my motion, Tom second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anything else? Did I miss, Pay? Tom, any, Dawn?
Resess until one?
Resess till one. Thank you, Jason.
Oh, wow. Well, how much, then will that be?
How long are they gonna wait?
Will that be?
Okay, that's the question. Ask something, we know the answer.
Did you see the text that sent?
Yes. That's quite good.
Well, maybe what should use, what should use first?
Yeah. Pay the one and still have left over a block.
You can, you can pay a mole by that.
Yeah, if you go to, from there, you need...
Yep. Sherry Jones?
No, she's on vacation.
Oh, all right.
Somebody from in here?
Yeah, me.
You and one other.
We have to eat this one.
Do you want to turn up as a county commissioner and do this?
A joint. Yeah. Yep. We'll open up as a joint.
Rick called, huh?
I think he's gonna call in.
He's supposed to be calling.
Yeah. And item number two, we're gonna have to have a member of the planning commission recommend approval of the ordinance or not. Guess we've got a few notes to go here.
Well, you got a fancy one, you got two of them.
Yeah, this is the outline for public hearing, probably should keep that around for future.
Yeah, I've got a copy in my ordinance.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, good.
And maybe I'll take it out a little bit different, so...
Just fill in your changes, you know, you have it.
Yeah.
It's a good...
Now, do we make the motion to adjourn out of the commissioners?
We would adjourn out of the planning commission and then, and then add, there's a county commission towards the end.
County first reading, can you hear?
Because you're with the planning commission now.
Uh, we'll, yeah, we'll convene as a joint, planning and county. Well, here's the...
I thought he was gonna call in at one o'clock. Thought he was gonna be gone this morning.
One of our meetings.
I thought he was gonna be gone in the morning, that's why we set it for one o'clock.
Yep, yeah, late, tall.
And if he doesn't, Dennis, you can handle it with...
I should be able to with what he's got there, yeah.
All this and the, and then the ordinance can prove higher, higher risk, more serious, right?
Uh, no, this is the, this is the use of buildings for living quarters.
Oh, this is this one, okay.
Yeah, I think, I gave you a copy of it, did I, Tom? Ordinance twenty-seven?
No. Oh, yes, you did.
That's what's keeping us confused, we're just kinda dealing with two different fields here.
Next group, we got that.
This was about municipal residential.
For the residential. This is people that...
Hello?
Hello, uh, Tom?
Hello, Kay? Sherry Jones? No, you don't, Sherry's all, okay. Getting ready, kinda.
Hey, good afternoon, Todd.
Hi.
So, does she need to pay attention this meeting?
Be a good idea, Kim, if you're...
Well, hey, I just wanna make sure I got everything set up here, so give me just a second, I'm sorry. Not wrong, something shitty here.
Dad?
Trying to find everything that's there. All right, so... We're, we're starting off with the second reading of the public, as the ordinance you had on the agenda a couple weeks last week. Is that what we're starting off with?
No, this is, this is ordinance twenty-seven, Todd.
Well, what, what did we have last, was it the first reading?
First reading of twenty-six was last week, and they, they made the motion to have the second reading on March thirtieth.
Okay, so they say twenty-six till the thirtieth, all right, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Because Sherry is gone today.
Right, and so this is ordinance number twenty-seven, what you're dealing with the commercial storage and accessory building?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, I'm with you now.
Okay.
Had to make sure I had my documents.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, where you're at, Mr. Chair, is you need to call the planning commission, the Robert County Planning Commission, and Robert's Board of County Commissioners to order for the purposes of a joint hearing on ordinance number twenty-seven.
Call to order the planning commission and Board of County Commissioners jointly for the purpose of public hearing on ordinance number twenty-seven.
Yeah. And then, Dawn, you'll leave, you'll leave two minutes, one for the planning commission and the one for your county commander.
Does that just a little bit, please?
So, whatever I ask, Mr. Chair, if you want, I can introduce the ordinance, and then you can open it up to public hearing.
All right, we do have a little bit of an outline here, just for the record, we have Todd Keyes, parliamentarian and consultant. Before I turn it over to Mr. Keyes of the first district, I'd like to have a member of the planning commission make a motion to recommend approval of ordinance number twenty-seven to the Board of County Commissioners, is that in order, Todd?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Commissioner Vergel, is there a second to that? Commissioner Zempel, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, motion carries. Mr. Keyes, would you provide an overview, please?
Yes, well, I was contacted by the Robert County Planning and Community Commissioners a few weeks ago to talk about changes that were made to the zoning regulations over the course of a couple years as we were reviewing the regulations. And one of those changes that occurred in that timeframe was that commercial storage garages were eliminated from the, I believe, the commercial district in the county. And for whatever reason that was, but there was a discussion regarding that. Since then, there has been some interest and requests to do some commercial storage garages outside the lake and maybe some other areas that could use all commercial in the county. And so, in order for anybody to make the request to ask, do a commercial storage garage, the county would need to amend their regulations, and that's what Article twelve, Section twelve, for conditional uses, would need to include in thirty-four in that zoning district. And the next thing that the proposed ordinance does would be also talk a little about accessory buildings. And in the current regulations that were adopted a couple of years ago, there was, the ordinance stipulates that if I have an accessory building, so that might be, you know, out at the farm, it might be the quantity or a grain shed. If it's out at the lake, it might be your e-cash garage or your attached garage, it'd be an accessory building or a storage shed. And right now, the ordinance reads that you cannot live in an accessory structure or have it used for residential purposes. So, there was discussion, and the board asked me to come up with some language that would allow people out the lakefront district to have the opportunity to use their accessory buildings for residential purposes, i.e., you know, bathroom, kitchen, sleeping rooms, what have you. And so, Section sixteen twenty-five, amendment number four, to allow residential dwelling purposes in accessory buildings at the lakefront district. And then, we had to, we had to change the reference in the private garage inspection of the, of Section sixteen twenty-five point one. That was a typo from the original ordinance amendment. So, that's what, that section nine oh two is just a clerical typo that I caught when I was reviewing your regulations. And then there's discussions about, okay, well, how can we use, or how can we use back lots? And back lots, again, are those lots across the road from a lakefront lot, right? So, there's discussions about, if we're gonna allow people to live in accessory buildings, I own the house on the lakefront, I also have my back lot across the, across the road, what kind of requirements should be placed upon that person that's allowing that dwelling to be used in an accessory building? So, we find an accessory dwelling, accessory structure dwelling, it could be a dwelling unit with accessories within it, accessory structure located on a back lot... in which less than 55% of the structure is dedicated to dwelling purposes, and where ownership of said, said structures is jaked to the waterfront parts of Helen County. So what that means is, I can only use up to 55% of that garage for residential purposes, otherwise it becomes more of a full-blown house. And that, I also have to own the lakefront lot in which it's attached, you know, the two lots are attached. And so, then we also have to define what the back lot was, because we didn't have that in the ordinance. That's the individual lot, physically separated from, uh, my legally available parcel and road right of way, which is only common with a waterfront parcel. So, what that section of Amendment 9 and Article 26 says that I can put a dwelling lot on an accessory structure which is located on the back lot. We left that lot across the road, and as long as I'm not using more than 55% of that structure, uh, for residential purposes, it will be okay. So I guess, I guess at this point, Mr. Chair, I would, I would, they can take any questions that you might have initially from the, from the, from the planning commission, to make sure that we, that characterize this correctly, and then you could open it up for a, a public talk.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the board for Mr. Keyes on the, on the ordinance change? Okay, I think we've reviewed it enough, well enough, Todd, so we are, we are good?
So then it would be time to open the public hearing and ask for proponent testimony first and then opponent testimony.
Okay. I don't, I don't recognize anybody from the public, but I'll make the announcement. Is there anyone here that wants to speak as a proponent to the ordinance change? Todd, there is none.
Okay.
Is there anyone, um, that would like to speak as opponent to the ordinance change? There is none, Todd.
Okay, so you can close the public hearing of both the planning commission and the county commission?
Okay, we declare the public hearing closed from the planning commission and the county commissioners.
And now you're back in front of the planning commission with the motion on the table. It'll be discussion on the motion.
Okay. Is there further discussion on the motion to approve?
Question, did you say we're back on the planning commission?
You are the planning commission, because that's where the motion was made, so the motion is made to approve, um, the planning commission, uh, to recommend to the county commission.
Hearing, no discussion, Todd?
Then the, then it's just a simple vote, um, from the planning commission.
Do we do that by voice vote or roll call?
Yeah, you can do a voice vote on this, and you're, you're all there.
Alright, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed, say no, motion carries.
Do you have any other planning commission business?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Then you can, then you can adjourn as the planning commission and, and go into county commission.
Is there a motion to adjourn as planning commission by Commissioner Zempel? Is there a second to that? Commissioner Johnston, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Alright, we're adjourned, Todd.
Alright, now you're back at the county commission. The county commission has held a public, requires a public hearing. You are now going to be holding the first reading by title. I'll read the title for you, ordinance 27, and ordinance pending Roberts County, Board of 22, the zoning ordinance for Roberts County, established by ordinance number 10, and all amendments thereto, and according to the provisions of Chapter 11.2, 1957 South Code of Customs Law, amendments thereof, and for repeal of all resolutions and ordinance, ordinances, conflicts therewith. So, now where you're at is setting a second reading date, and if you want to, you can ruffle that and do that at your next meeting on the 30th, if you so inclined.
Okay. Will 11 o'clock fit your schedule?
Um, what time is the, what time is the second reading on the other, uh, ordinance, the other ordinance? Is that about the same time?
That's, that's 11:00 a.m.
Yeah, let's do them both at 11 o'clock on the 30th.
Okay.
And so, that's basically, um, that's basically it, so you're ready to have the thumbs up, thumbs down on both ordinance amendments on the 30th and 11:00 a.m.
Alright.
Since I'm on the line, is there anything else that you have questions about? Anything I need to be brought up to speed on? Anything for me?
I do not feel so.
Well, I know, just, just briefly, um, you're all aware of what the American REIT Investment Act is coming out, that, uh, Roberts County is gonna be getting a full load of money, spread out over two payments over the course of the next year, and the first payment's supposed to happen sometime in the next 45 days. Um, what I've been telling county commissioners is that, um, you're gonna get half your money now and another half a year from now. Right now, the guidance on how you can spend that money is a little bit broad. My recommendation would be just to sit on that money for a little bit until Treasury comes down with more specific guidance on how you can spend it.
Okay.
So, just, just, just a little word to the wire.
Okay.
Do we have any idea as to the amount?
Hang on, I can, I can, give me a second here. Uh, let me look here. Let me look, it was, um, Roberts County, $215,852.
Two million what?
$15,852. How do I like that math?
Long.
Now, that's, that's, that's just an estimate, that hasn't come down, but that's what the estimate is. And right now, uh, like I said, you'll get a million in the next 45 days and another million a year from now. And there will, there's four general categories that you can spend this money on. And they're kind of, uh, kind of broad and loose yet, and so they always will get tighter as time goes on, you know that? And so, again, rather than go out and spending a million dollars on something, I would just hold off a little bit until we get some more guidance. And so, I think if, if you're not, not needing the money today and not missing it today, you could probably sit on it for a few months and, and determine in your budgeting time what would be the best way to spend that.
But do we have any idea what the four categories might be in the event that?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I can pull that up.
I don't want to go spend 20,000 on something where it could be covered under this for planning, even if you just have a general idea.
Where's all? Yeah, hang on just a second, I, I got, I don't have it.
Ready.
I think I saw that address, we're gonna get nine million?
He, he had 50 to 60.
Were that's between all the tribes purchased here?
Well, here's, here's the four general categories, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read them to you, okay? Number one, respond to public health emergency with respect to the COVID-19 or its negative impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or aid to the packaging industry such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. So if they're ready to even give away, right? To any one of those things I just talked about, do grants or, or what have you. Again, I would hold off doing that for a little guidance. Number two, you can respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers that are performing such essential work, or provide grants to eligible employers that have performed essential work. So what that means, if you want to give premium pay, you can give up to $25,000 per employee if they're doing, um, certain eligible activities, right? Number three, for the provision of government services to the extent of a reduction in revenue, i.e. online property or income tax due to public health emergency. So if you can document that you've lost money either through property taxes, gas tax, you know, revenue streams because they just related to the COVID, you can re, you can reimburse your budget for that type of money, right? And then number four, make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And you know what they did say, roads? And so, if you're thinking about taking a million dollars to do a new bridge, I would wait a little bit to see if that gets more refined. So my point, my point is, there's a million dollars out there that you're gonna have in your bank, and I just would say, you know, wait till the ship gets to the port and, you know, let the other sailors go off first before you decide to go off.
Yeah, that's good advice.
Because we'll be giving more guidance, we were, we were, I was told last week, I was sitting on a, a National Association of County Officials meeting, um, that they expect Treasury to have some guidance in the next, well, that was a week ago already, so I would say sometime in the next seven to 10 days. And then that might give us a little bit better idea on how to recommend spending it. It's not hurting anything sitting in the bank is what, is what I'm hoping for.
Alright.
Okay?
Okay.
All good, all good news.
You've, oh, thanks a million for your help.
We'll, we'll, we'll see you next week.
Okay, Todd, thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Todd, as far as that next week, that is just on, uh, hearing or whatever, whatever you say about it, what that guy puts on it, that's not what we're voting on, right, or whatever?
Sorry, that, what you're voting on next week is the first ordinance is gonna be on the rezoning of, um, of that property, right?
Yep.
And then, you're then gonna vote on changing the ordinance to allow commercial storage buildings anywhere on commercially zoned properties in the county. Then, and, and there's no comment at this next meeting, we've already had the public hearing, so you're just gonna have two thumbs up, thumbs down votes. Then what happens is, in about a month after that, when the ordinances are, after they've been published in the newspaper, and they're not referred, and they become, um, legal, which will give us probably about the first debate, then somebody could apply for a commercial storage building on a commercially zoned lot. That time, they're gonna have to come before you with their plan and everything, and then there'll be another public hearing on that specific commercial storage.
I guess, just gone by that guy you heard him last week, so, I mean.
Yeah, and he won't, he won't, he, he won't be able to talk at this next public hearing, right? Because it's not, I mean, it's his next action, because you guys are held in a hearing, how we're just rezoning the property and allowing somebody to ask, but nobody's asked to do a commercial storage garage. When those people come a month from now, six weeks from now, to ask for a commercial storage garage, you don't get a chance to testify at that point in time. Okay?
Perfect, thank you, Todd.
Alright, you guys, have a great day, and see you know.
Thank you, goodbye. Any other discussion?
Uh, they asked about that, they like number two, essential work, no. Number one, respond to travel and all that regular stuff. Si Chi Halleroi, they're probably come out of that.
They said something about tourism, didn't they?
I mean, so I think, you gotta be careful what we're gonna spend on out of our general, because we could, we always put it back in, I mean, say if we took it out of a certain budget, the Si Chi Halleroi.
Should you reimburse it back in?
Yes.
I would say if you, if it qualifies for that tourism.
Wow.
I'm just worried about this money, what are you gonna do with it? I mean, the government, not us, but I mean, the government.
For us to have the ability to turn around and grant it out to other.
If anybody wins on it.
It's just like, well, we, we need to, we need to see those guidelines.
Yeah, yeah.
Where he was reading in front of.
That's a slippery slope. People have to apply for, I'll give you the same.
I don't know if I wanna go down that road or not, with all the PPP money that was turned out.
Two businesses coming in and saying, well, we, we locked this, it's open. You're gonna give one of them out, and all you ever, you have to go.
The county is strapped for cash anyway, that we gotta, we gotta look out for the needs that we have.
I think you better put something like face, and I agree, need some, and we got a little cushion.
Well, I know what you're saying.
Bring you to think about.
If we can use this one for someone, it's like, is that you not?
I got a question.
We should use our own budget and not use the public.
We're just wrapping up, yeah, we're gonna have something for us.
I got a letter from the state, you know, we use the phrase, uh, right away for state mode, they sent me a letter asking if I wanna put a B down.
Okay.
To do it together. And, um, I think I got the equipment to do it, but we made really good money doing it, but that accident was, that kinda, I think, that took care of any money we made.
People some lives on that deal.
But I think we were actually clearing about 17, 18 dollars and doing it, so I just, whatever you want.
You, you feel that you have the manpower to fit that in with all the rest of your spraying that's required?
Uh, we got three trucks before that, so it would take an extra week, 10 days each time doing it, it would fill the month of doing it solid if we had good days.
So the, the state roads would be the interstate?
Interstate.
From, from the state line down to Grand County line, or how far would it go?
It goes down to 101, is it 109, that comes out of Grand County. But it, yeah, it goes the whole way down, Highway 10, and 127, and then over to Clear City, that's about, it's about 170 miles.
25 to the border, it's supposed to.
Yeah, up to the border.
I took copies.
You, you wanna run that by your, run that by your guys and let us know next week? You think you have manpower and equipment, or?
Uh, it's from, I'm running a team, my girlfriend Barb drives for me, well, she's got grandkids now that she's sooner spend time with. So I don't know if I'm gonna need another driver, but I got Roger and David and everybody else. We're doing rip rap, we, we can do that in May, but I just don't know, you know, the weather's bad, with rain and wind, that could wipe off the month of June pretty quick. We usually do the county first and then the state road, I don't know. It's gonna be time, you know, but the weather's the thing that really screws with us.
Did you get anything in the county spray last fall? All the county roads last?
Yeah, we had everything. And we're doing rip rap for roads, we do that twice a year with our own, that the weeks come back from that, for the path. And that adds a lot of weekends, you know, that we can get done before we, before June when the thistles are done. But I run by you if you want it, if you want to figure it out. Yeah, cause Eddie bid it out, I think as long as we bid it under 25,000, we'll get it. And they told Eddie, this is what Eddie told me, that if it run a little over or whatever, it was not a big deal, maybe go a few thousand over, but we cleared, I'm guessing about 17, 15, 17, we did. To fit it in, you know, if we run out of time.
Well, that's, that's just it.
We'd be spraying the month of July, and they're cutting in July, so it's gotta be done before they cut. That's the only thing that I got.
The state, state's mowing their ditches.
Yeah, they start going first of July.
First of July.
Pretty much first, they're going already. And it should be sprayed a week before that. But I hate quit cutting, or, you know, not spraying pony ditches and do that to get it done. And that's the main problem I would have, I guess.
Sure your contract would have dates? I'm sure the contract would have dates in it, completion dates.
Yeah, I threw the letter out there, I think it starts May first, on the contract, that we would do with that, so. I don't know many thistles, and, and May, so. And that's going to be part of the first up being.
Okay. I just thought of that, I was trying to go. Kim, you've been involved with the sweep program before, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, it won't be bad, but it seems like we're running short on men all the time, we had three trucks.
Yeah, we had three trucks before, and then we moved on to two.
And I'm just thinking, like with, on the interstate, there, under another jam of gravity, you can't turn very, there's not, it'd be his fault, and, you know, it'd be nice money, I'm not denying that, but, it's, on the interstate, just a big say, everybody didn't drive.
I'm worried about the liability.
That's what I.
$17,000 is not worth the previous accident we had, and, and how many accidents have there been? Co-truck drivers, somebody.
I guess I'd rather see townships.
Been last month on the interstate here.
Making money on townships.
Yeah, if I stuck with, you know, called all the townships, I'm sure I could get it up, to make up the difference.
And then you're fighting the traffic late free, I'd rather see them, you know, just my opinion of it, I mean, everybody's getting the.
Townships you can schedule, you know, or states that's there waiting, or, and you get the rest.
I agree, I think, I think we, even if we made a little less than the townships for safety factor, more than offsets the difference.
And both you can schedule, I, well, last year, I was, two years ago, I was, middle of July, doing long hours township, and they were hap, they were happy just to get it done. And there's, I mean, you have more calls, it's, it's tough scheduling, because they're working, and the ones that are riding with are driving, and I'm spraying.
Get a windy summer, spring now, and we're gonna, they're gonna want to spray it for
I think I could, you know, just get in contact with more townships, and do, schedule more down, rather than doing that.
If, if you have the time, if your man had the time to do it, but I think you got your answer on the state deal, that we're not interested in. There we go, well, thanks for the update, thank you.
Thank you, man.
All right. Anything else, if we're done? Motion to adjourn. Hey, thank you, you got a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries, we're done, thanks, Jason.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift, for all your pond needs, countryside aid, assisted living, and memory care, in Rosalt, where your family is our family, First Savings Bank of Sisseton, to use our online banking to save you time, Stilson Service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels, Tri-State Water in Sisseton, for all your water needs, water softeners and reverse osmosis, right here in Sisseton, and of course, Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching, and have a great day.